You know, usually I would be annoyed as the only woman to have been asked to take the meeting minutes. But, I am not annoyed because I'm actually great at taking minutes.
Oh yeah?
So there's that.
Okay.
Just look at the rest of the table. Do you really want us to take?
That's what I thought. That was exactly it. That said, I have no idea what the date is.
Eleven.
Got it.
Run camera. Ready to go? Okay. Welcome to Town and New Paltz Planning Board Meeting of August 11th, 2014. First up on the agenda is the minutes from the last meeting. And back and forth on whether you can approve minutes if you weren't there or not. I've heard both sides of the story, so I'm open to Tom, Tim, and Peter, whether they want to go forward with it.
Look, I guess I am. I'm fine with these minutes.
Yeah, I'm fine with them.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Still move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is conceptual review, concept review. Cuppen, come on up.
Come on up.
Come on up. Tell us what you want to do.
Oh, so that stands or sit or?
Whatever. Generally, we sit. We have a discussion on it. Generally, what's going on is, we usually do conceptual plans to give you 15 minutes or thereabouts about what we see or don't see in the plan. And so when you make an application, you have a better understanding, at least where the board is.
Yes, that would be.
Hey, consultants are not involved in this. And as you can see, our town attorney and our town engineer are both absent tonight. Okay. So tell us what you want to do.
Well, I have a 49-acre parcel. It's actually two parcels on North Ohioville Road with the operating horse farm. And the man I bought it from was Tom Spinnard, but this guy Nick Baxter tried to buy this parcel from like a few years back, subdivided it into two parcels because he wanted to build on this part here. You could see it says "proposed house." This is all the work that Nicholas Baxter did on the actual site plan here, which I think you all have a copy of. So the green line that I've outlined shows the existing two parcels. So one is approximately 17 acres and the other one's approximately 23 acres.
Which are the two, though?
There's this big one here. It's kind of like an L around the green.
Yeah, okay.
So, but where I'd like to build is up on this hill because it's a very high hill. It's separate from the farm. It doesn't feel like you're in the business part of it. It's more, and so that would be ideal. And also to have seasonal views of the valley and stuff when the leaves are down and things like that. So this is currently a big hay field back here at the top of this ridge. And this abuts against the apple orchard. So, I thought there would be a few ways to go about doing this. One would be extend the existing lot line that shows the red line. Or another, which maybe would be cleaner in a way, is to just make the residential just a simple approximately 200 feet. I know 200 feet's the minimum. Just make one line. Because I would just grant myself an easement then of the driveway. There's an existing shale driveway that's in the kind of purple color.
Right.
So.
You would still own both lots?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
And I mean, I don't really see them necessarily being sold separately because why would you own a farm and not have anywhere to live? Because there's nowhere to live there right now. I live up the street at 420 North Ohioville. I've been trying to sell for a number of years, but Gun Club's not helping my cause much. But, so anyway, that's what I was hoping to do is build on this property and sell the other property. So, the one, the one thing is, there is an existing septic on the, on that lower hill. But I think I just wouldn't, it would just remain unused. It's never been tested because there's no well. So.
Okay. Couple of things off the top of my head on it is that what I'd look at is to make sure that, this is, I think you said about 200 foot of road frontage if you use the blue line?
Yes.
Make sure that you have areas on that, because you're narrowing yourself down there, for your septic and reserve field and your well. Or without infringing on the property lines. You hate to draw a property line and say, hey, I only got 10 foot there and I need 20 and I need a variance. You don't want to do that.
Okay.
But the property lines and the distance from the house itself.
Right.
So it all fits.
Yeah. You want, yeah, so first one is, somebody draw it up and distance and shows you where it is. And that's your septic field. And because you have to get those things approved, make sure you got, you know, you're not hemming yourself in for that. You need a field and you'll need a reserve field. But you should have enough area, but I just, you know, off the top, don't want you to cut yourself off because of it. We probably want to see, probably want to see, even though you own both properties, some sort of easement agreement for the, for the use of the shared driveway. These begin, can become tough when the owners keep changing hands and so we generally look for them. We do have a couple on files that we've asked for over, we've gotten before. So you can contact Kelly and see what the shared driveway agreement would look like to give you an idea and no sense reinventing the wheel on it.
Okay.
So in either of these scenarios, whether it's the blue line or you're extending the red line, you would have an easement for a shared driveway?
Actually with, yeah, you, on the, on the case of extending the red line, it's really more the farm would share, probably just share. I mean, the farm does use this road back up until that little wetland area essentially because they pretty much, it's contained up in the front half of the property. So, yes. But it wouldn't, the farm probably, right now, the green line does encompass the driveway. So it would be, you know, the easement, in this scenario, how it is set up now, the farm is the one sharing the residential.
Right.
Vice versa.
The house would own the driveway.
Exactly, exactly.
And the farm would?
Would use it.
Use it.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any house, any living quarters on the farm?
There is a worker trailer next to the farm up here. But it's not really suitable for a house.
It's not a permanent structure.
No, not a permanent structure. So, you know, horse trainer stays there and a cave, things like that. So it's not, yeah, I wouldn't want to live there. No thanks. So, and the other thing I thought with this, splitting it here is then the old barn, the worker trailer. And also the funny thing about how it's currently divided is the well, excuse me, the septic, which is the yellow line in front of the, the yellow field in front of the barn, or it's kind of orange in front of the barn.
Yep.
Is separate from the well, which is between the old barn and the trailer. It's kind of this, so they're on separate, currently the well and the septic for both the trailer and the office and the barn are on separate parcels.
On separate properties, yep.
Versus if we divide it this way, that one would have its own septic and well and this one would have its own septic and well. So that, that's another, you know, it's like, do you want the driveway with the one parcel or do you want the septic and well, you know, contained with the farm and then contained with the house? You know, that's what, that's what I wasn't sure about.
Yeah, I, and the two things that come, again, depending on where you want to cut it, we'd have to show that this is a buildable lot.
Right.
So you would have to show that this property, where the barn is, can, can get a house and a septic field in there and a well in there.
Yeah, it's up here, yeah. Yeah, because this wouldn't need it. This already has it. It'd be up here.
Well, no, this would, this would be the one that you would have.
Mm-hmm. This already has the existing.
Well, we'd have to have that marked out.
Oh, I see.
Okay, just so that we know that it exists and it's there and it can be built. Sometimes you get pieces of property that look very big, but you really can't put in an effective septic field. So then it becomes unbuildable lot. And so even though it has acreage, it doesn't have the ability to put a house on it. So, and the flip side of that is where a well would go on this side?
There's already a well. This side already has a well in the septic. Actually, the, the well is here.
Well, you told me the well's on the other side of the property line.
Right. But it, it services the barn. And all the wa, all the fields have waters that come from that well. So the well services the trailer because the barn doesn't have water. This old barn. This barn does. So the well services the trailer, the barn, and the various horse waters out in the fields. And then the septic services, there's a bathroom in the worker trailer and a bathroom in the office.
So are you saying you have to show that there is a well on that property line?
Well, no, what I'm, yeah, what I'm getting at is, if you sold this and somebody else bought this, we'd have to see that they could add a well and septic field and a house location.
Oh, I see. If they bought this, that would probably be this one back here, I would guess.
Well, it depends on which, which line you draw, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay? I mean, those are the things that come on.
Okay.
If you do the green line or change, change the green to the red line, then I'd have to show that this is a buildable lot with a, its own well and its own septic field.
Oh, even though it's a commercial agricultural farm, it would have to be buildable?
Well, if someone came and bought, it's in, it's in an area that can be residential housing.
I think what, but I think what you're saying, Mike, though, is that would just create the option if someone wanted to?
Right.
Build a house on it.
Yeah.
And I think, I think what Mike's suggesting, and I would suggest exactly the same thing, really think about, you know, what would be most easily transferable. You know, you're, you're assuming that someone in the future would buy this stuff together. But, you know, why tie your hands? Like if you could plan for the future, if, if you could put a well and a septic on that side, do that now and, and plan for, you know, selling these lots individually. And I think that's what you want.
Yeah. And again, it's not, you're not building it in.
Right.
You're showing that this is where the site would be for a typical house, well, and septic.
You might as well do that now while you're doing this work.
If you do the lot line revision, it's a lot better to have two buildable lots and one buildable lot and one not buildable. It just makes sense.
Yeah, in that case, it seems to, it would seem to make sense to go with the blue line because there is a buildable, already a buildable site. It's just not where I want to build.
Well, would you want to, if you go with the blue line, would you want it with two lots or three lots?
It would still be two.
Just two lots.
You just take the screen line and move it down to the?
Okay, then, then both lots would be buildable once you put a septic?
Yeah.
In a well on this one.
Because I think it's true, the, the farm area up here, there's really no room to build anything unless you had it right in the road and took away a pasture, maybe.
Well, behind it. I mean, if you come up.
What about behind it, right?
Yeah, if you came up, you know, this is wetland here. But again, that's, that's the idea of it, if.
In the riding ring, the beautiful new riding ring.
But even, even, no, but even like towards the back, is there anything buildable back here or?
It looks all wetland.
No.
It's all wet.
No, the buildable would be this field where there's a current septic that's not being used because there's no well. Or, you know, maybe the old barn could be converted or something. That was, but even that's kind of far away from the septic. So that's why there's no bathroom in my, in my studio that's an old barn. Now I got to go over to the office of the, of the barn and order. So, I don't know if I'm asking the right questions, but.
I guess, yeah, the key, key thing's on, as long as you have road frontage on both lots.
Okay.
That's, that's the key thing on it. We're looking for.
And that they're both buildable as well, right?
Yeah, we're looking for a typical house layout. It doesn't lock you in, but we try to minimize the areas of disturbance. And that they both have attic, you know, or have the septic fields laid out, have the wells associated with it. So, right now, having a well on one lot and a septic on the other is a no-no.
Yeah, but it exists, you know.
I know it exists.
It's all land, okay.
Yeah, and it works out because you own both of them.
Right.
But if someone bought this, they'd be hard up for water because you have the well.
Yeah.
Or vice versa on that. So, think through and think then how you want to lay it out. Typically, we're looking for, you know, and again, from, from a driveway standpoint, you love that high, high spot. You've got a long run of a driveway on it, right? We'll look for topos, just to get an idea of elevations. If it's pretty flat and wetland, okay, but take a look at the topos required for it. There's limitations on how steep a driveway you can put in. I don't think there's, but, you know, we're getting back here to get up on that, maybe an issue. And then you may have to lay out the driveway a little bit differently to keep below the 10% grade that's required. With that, you may find out, I got to inch this, this line over here to be better suited for a driveway. So that's why I'm trying, not to lock yourself into something that you find out like, oh God, now I can't get the driveway up there or I can't do something else on it. So don't, try to get with, with a survey, a layout of the proposed way you want to go with it. And then, you know, I don't know what your long-range plans are for that second lot. I know you want to build here. Are you going to put it up for sale or, or do something else with it? But what would make sense from a sellable point of view? What do you want to create? What do you want to be able to show somebody that they could build here? They could have a farm here and things of that. You lay out the wetlands, we're subject to the wetland law, you're aware of that, and the buffer is associated with it. So we'd have to see that buffer. And then we have to see any impact on it. Now, sometimes you get a driveway into the buffer area and if it's flat-out design, can you move it? Because that's what the question would be. So you want to make sure you got the buffer in there and then show me the driveway or that you're not doing anything with, impacted wise. Peter, anything?
No, no, again, just want to make sure that if you do use a blue line and there's extension of the driveway over here, that you're not planning to cross any new wetlands.
Nope, the wetlands, yeah.
On this side.
The driveway's already been improved with DEC approval.
Yeah, okay, that's a done deal, yeah.
Through that little kind of neck there. And there is wetland way in the back here, but it's, it's far away.
It's on the other side of the slope.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So it's, this is actually much further from any wetland, that building site than the lower one. But yeah, so yeah, that part should be okay, I believe.
Okay.
So you start, I start with a survey. I mean, I guess I've never really navigated this kind of a project, so if you get a project manager, you typically see.
Well, typically, there are two different ways of going about it. We've seen both on, sometimes you get a, a surveyor will come in and mark out various locations. Eventually, you have to do a perk test to find the water and, and for the septic field. You go that through the Department of Health on it. So we would need that, that they, that the tests to prove successful for it. Driveway cut, you know, permit for that. But since you're not changing anything, probably don't need that. We probably would want to see your 2012 permits for the DEC for crossing it, just a document that we've seen and verified that you, you do have that in place. Yeah, mark out the wetlands and a buffer on it. And, hell, this, usually we don't get a golden opportunity to say, well, you know, I could put the lot line here or I could put the lot line there or I could change it that. What I've tried to say is, lay out how you want your house and your facility on it and then draw the line that best suits you. Okay? I'm not enamored with a straight line or a curved line or anything else like that. So, you know, if you, if you come up here straight and then say, you know, I really got to do a little twisting to get around this slope here, so maybe I'll just branch out here and go here. And again, from a, from a septic field, all they're going to do is do a perk test and say, I could put one here. Okay? That's, that's all it is. It isn't anything more than, you know, they don't dig it up, they don't lay it out or anything else. And there's plenty of area here that I would, it'd be hard for us to say you couldn't find a spot to put in a septic and reserve.
Yeah, okay.
Tom, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Tim?
No, it seems like you have a good opportunity to do what you want. And I think the idea is, we're suggesting, make sure you think of other alternatives if you're to transfer any of these properties in the future. You know, try to set yourself up for, you know, what gives you the most options.
Okay. I guess so.
I was just going to ask about the wetland, but we talked about it.
We talked about it. Yeah, well, we'll have to see that, marked out.
Well, I mean, that was kind of one other idea with this, but I don't, I've been told and I haven't talked to Wetland directly, but there's a culvert right here in the, in the apple orchard. I've seen if you could extend it and just make a straight driveway up because the rest of it's dry. And it seems like you could just, all you need is that one culvert in that spot, extending off of the, what the apple orchard already has because they have a road going right up the other side.
And then you don't have to fool with an easement.
Right, yeah. It's just whether the DEC would allow that or not. So maybe I should talk to them because then, yeah, you'd have two separate parcels with their own things. And that would probably be.
More easy to transfer.
But it'd be another big driveway to build, more item and all that junk.
Well, one, yeah, well.
But it would be simpler for splitting them, though.
Yeah, well, that's why we talk about the, the agreement on the shared driveway.
Yeah.
To the extent that something falls apart on it, some different owners come in, somebody would have to put in a driveway. And you want to make sure that they could theoretically put a driveway.
That's true.
They say, look, I can put it in through here, but I'm going to use this one and this is just.
Right, just see if it could be done in the future.
Right.
Right, that's a good suggestion. Great, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, I thank you all for your time.
Sure, good luck.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Hopefully I'll see you again if I can pull it together here.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, have a good night.
I, I apologize to the board for this. I did schedule ShopRite to come in to talk about why they had to change the design. And I had the accessory apartment on the list. We got an email at, I don't know, 6:00 Sunday night to Kelly saying that the accessory apartment is, she's not available to come to the meeting. And then approximately 4:00 this afternoon, I got an email from ShopRite that they have some other issues and they're unable to come to the meeting. So folks, if I had gotten it, if I had known this information last week, I would have canceled the meeting. But be that as it may, that's all I have on the agenda for tonight.
All right.
And since you were taking such good notes.
Something about open comments?
Um, yeah. Yeah, we can do that. I'm sorry. Public comment on issues, yep.
Okay, I don't want to take much of your time, but I just, I just have some concerns. I know that.
Wait, hold on one second. Can you say?
Can you hear your name?
Yeah, you want to come up there?
Yeah, come on up, yeah.
Okay, oh, oh. Uh-oh. Oh, my. Harry Ellis, 156 Butterville.
Yep.
Corner house there. It's indirectly related to issues that are, you know, with the public parking that's occurring at the Mohunk Preserve. But I have some concerns about the, the intersection of Butterville and 299. The frequency of accidents, as I had pointed out before in a couple of the board meetings, is it's roughly 2.7 to 3% of all accidents that occur in New Paltz occur at that intersection and oftentimes are quite volatile. And I was just wondering, I've had some sort of talk with the preserve in reference to asking the DOT to change the speed limit from 55 to 45. And I know that they had issues up there, 44, 55, where they had a campground or something and they wanted to change it. And the DOT was, I guess, apprehensive about doing the change. So I'm hoping that when this whole public issue hearing comes before you, that you might consider lowering the speed limit as being one of the prerequisites for getting a part, you know, that parking availability and things like that. Maybe that'll apply more pressure to the DOT, I don't know. But I do have concerns because there's a lot of high-speed travel along 299 and it's very dangerous, especially at that corner, because I'd say 50% of the people are going south to Gardner, making that left-hand turn, and they're unaware of the fact that there's somebody coming up the hill and could really nail one pretty easily. So it's, it's, it's a concern that I have. Another thing that's just a little bit different, I spoke to you before about the fact that maybe some reed bed, septic or, or, or reed bed sewer, sewer things, opening a sewer district. And I know that you currently are having connections between the town of Highland and Lloyd, town of Lloyd, with water. And I don't know whether you or your board or the, another board may be related to the connection between the two in terms of trying to provide water when this issue comes up in a couple of years or whenever it's happening. But my suggestion would be to maybe connect with Lloyd for sewer and water as well issues because they have a common concern along 299. They have 9W, none of which has sewer or water except down North Road. And I think that that would probably provide, it might work out for both, both parties to think about working together, both water and sewer. And I know you've got some of these other things going on with development, developments and stuff like that, and maybe you can incorporate some of that, maybe even get into putt corners possibly too. If, if they can run a gas line down Threway, why not run a sewer line underneath it? I don't know. But that's another thing.
No, it's not, not, not our realm. Generally, the town board is the one that deals with the water issues and the, and the creation of sewer districts and things of that sort.
Okay.
And then obviously when we review the proposal we have for, on the east side of Threway there. Threway, I'm hitting a blank on what.
Wildberry.
Wildberry Lodge, thank you. The issues of water and sewer will come up again on that. And how do we do it and how do we take care of infrastructure?
I think you should really try to take advantage of it if you can and try to incorporate it with some other development of the, the light industrial zoning that you have all around that area, if you can possibly do it. I know that if you did something between the two towns, that it probably would be more advantageous for Highland because they have more high and dry land than what we have on this side of 299. But even so, it probably would be of a benefit anyway.
It is five miles from 9W to Threway.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a chunk of change.
However, there's like Illinois Mountain, which has a development, development potential of, say, 300 or 400 acres. I don't know how many houses you could get in there, but conceivably, there's, there's that. And, and the other end of 299, you've got those two large parcels that never really got fully developed. So, you know, just food for thought.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, another question. On the water road intersection, that's, 299 is a county road there, correct? So does DOT have it or would county be looking at that?
It's a state road.
I have to take.
It's a state road.
Yeah. I'm not sure who has, you know, there are different things on it. You know, is it a state road? Who does the maintenance on it may be different than, so.
Who would have the jurisdiction over the intersection?
Generally, I would, I would suspect that it's DOT would have jurisdiction. Now, Elster County may, PPW probably does the maintenance on it out that way. But we, it's come up before about, and it's come up before with the creation of the bike path out to Walco View Farms.
Right, yeah.
About the speed limits and dropping that there.[1743.32] About the speed limits and, and dropping that there. So it, it's viable, I think it's a, if you can put enough things together and say, look, I got this, I got this, I got this.
Exactly.
Maybe you may be able to get some in the section. But I agree with you 100%. Going west on 299, you do not, and you want to make a left, you do not see until the last minute.
That's right.
Who's coming the other way.
Yeah, I've had so many people run up on my lawn. I had somebody roll over on my lawn last, last year, so.
Yeah.
It's very hazardous.
Yeah, we guys are something to do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nothing? Okay. Anything else for the board? I do appreciate it and I do apologize again for it, but I think they just figured Kelly wasn't going to be here. No sense having any applications before us.
That makes sense.
But we'll get going on the other ones. I did have a discussion with Mohawk Preserve. Things are getting put together a little bit more slowly than I anticipated, but Glenn